Good morning. I've got ten o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County of Starr, Monday, September 23rd. I'd like to welcome all of you for being here today. First item, let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, sir. I am a national four-Her, and I pledge allegiance to the justice of the nation. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If it's okay with the court, I'll, I'm gonna skip to item eight. And this is a proclamation of the National Four-H Week. To all the Four-Hers, we're honored that you all are here with us this morning, and we thank you all for being here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Honorable Judge Veda and members of the Starr County Commissioners' Court. On behalf of the 250 youth members and adult Four-H volunteers in Starr County, we are asking the Starr County Commissioners' Court to help us in celebrating National Four-H Week, October 6th through 12th, 2019, by approving the Four-H proclamation that our Four-H members will be reading at this time. Thank you for your support of our Four-H Youth Program.
Whereas, the Starr County Commissioners' Court is proud to honor the Four-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M Agro-Life Extension Service for 112 years of providing experience-based education to youngsters throughout the Lone Star State. And whereas, this admirable program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for the whole child, includes head, hands, and health, helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, contributing members of our society.
Whereas, its more than 550,000 urban, suburban, and rural youth participants, ranging in age from 18 to 19, hail from diverse ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds, and truly represent a cross-section of the state. And whereas, the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that it has today were it not for the service of its more than 22,000 volunteers, who have given generously of their time, talents, energies, and resources to the youth of Texas.
Whereas, throughout its proud history, the Four-H program has developed positive roles for countless Texans and commended the Four-H Youth Development Program, innovating and expiring programs, continues to build character and to instill the values that have made our state strong and great. Now, therefore, be it. Resolved that the Starr County Commissioners' Court hereby designated October 6th through 12th, 2019, as National Four-H Week in Texas and commended the Four-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M Agro-Life Extension Service. And many men and women who have made this program a success, thank you again for all your support for our Four-H program.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to go ahead and proclaim Four-H Week. Before I call for the vote, I just wanna congratulate all of you for being members of such a rewarding and outstanding club. There's two clubs that I belonged to when I was, many years ago, when I was younger. And one of them was a Four-H, and the other one was Boy Scouts, that really left a impact in my life, and I think it had a lot to do with who and what I am now. So, stay with it, it's a great organization. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Lori? You want them to hold this?
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much. Congratulations. Y'all are welcome to stay, and you don't have to leave. Okay, we'll go ahead and go on with our agenda. Under Claims, Mr. Pettis.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
The claims have been reviewed and represented.
I want you to approve, Your Honor.
Aye.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next is the vendor's list. Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is to adopt the Starr County Budget for Fiscal Year 1920. We've been working with this budget for quite a while. We've had several public hearings. We met with each Commissioner and those Department Heads that went by my office. I think it's a good budget, it's very healthy, and it does leave room for a fund balance, or a rainy day fund, to increase our rainy day fund. So, I recommend that we do approve this budget.
Your Honor, make a motion to approve budget fiscal year 2019-2020. For next year's.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next thing that we need to do is to adopt the tax rate for the same year, 1920. The rate will remain the same as last year, which was at .7784. The rollback rate, or the rate that we could have taken it to, was .855791. However, the court decided to keep it at the same rate. And by the way, in the last, I don't know, maybe 10 years or better, the court has lowered the tax rate twice. We have never increased our tax rate. But it's still a healthy budget, so congratulate the board for that. Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anyone that needs to come before the court at this time? Yes, sir. Okay, item nine, if it's okay with the court, we'll move to it. And this is to approve a serial tolerance towards domestic violence proclamation for October 10th. Mr. Canades?
Yes, Your Honor, Commissioners. Good morning. We're asking that the court sign this proclamation. We do this annually. The title of it is very misleading. It's a domestic violence proclamation. Really and truly, what it's, it's an awareness to stop domestic violence, is what it is. Domestic violence is a problem that plagues our nation. Starr County is not immune. And during the month of October, we celebrate, or rather, we try to remember and bring awareness to victims of domestic violence, and this proclamation is part of that. We will be holding our annual candlelight vigil at the Roma ISD Performing Arts Center in Roma on October 16th, Wednesday, at 6:30. We'd invite everybody that's present today, and the Commissioners' Court Judge as well, elected officials. We will be having our annual domestic violence remembrance vigil on that date. And I would ask the court to approve the proclamation that we have submitted to the court.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Could we take a photo real quickly with staff?
Thank you, thank you all very much. And I do wanna thank you all publicly for the work that you all do. I know, we do have quite a problem. But, you know, I guess thanks to the County Attorney's Office, we try and keep a handle on it. So, the ladies, thank you all very much. Anyone else? Do not, we'll go back to our regular agenda. Under item seven, it's an action item to request a loan from General Fund for PO 117404 in the amount of $5,064.60. It's an engineering service invoice for the CDBG, contract number 7217440, paving project.
Good morning. It's a reimbursement basis, this contract with TDA.
Moved in second to approve. Can I amend that to read, Commissioner, as depending on availability of funds?
Depending on availability of funds.
Is that okay with you?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. Discussion? All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 10 is a action item, and this is a final approval on Double Lee RV Park.
What do they do for septic?
Well, actually, I asked for a design, and then the license installer.
Has to have a.
They install as per state requirements.
Yes, I've seen two, three up in my area that are popping up up there with three and four RVs already in place, that have been, have services, have water, and septic tanks, and electricity. I've seen three of them, if I'm not mistaken. What's the regulations, or, I mean?
Yeah, well, actually, if you go by the Star Village, as per the fire line field, but it's.
Because I've never seen one, you know, come to this Commissioners' Court in my area to approve a. And I've seen up, three locations, they have three and four installment of RVs in there.
I guess what, what we need to do, Commissioners, when, if you could give us those locations, really, our enforcement is really in the electrical and the water. You know, they're not supposed to service some electricity or water until they get a letter from the planning department certifying that they have gone through the plating process and designing and all that. But if.
By state law, they have to, an installer, a licensed installer, has to be hired by whoever does the development, okay? And then I check it out that they do meet the requirement.
But like I said, do we have to have a temporary pole? Or they just put, they say they have a temp, like I said, I see one has only one temporary pole, and they're servicing the other area. They have not installed the trailers there, but I can see only one temporary pole, and there are three, is ready for three installments, and they only have one water meter.
Actually, one of those cases on Embassy Road, I went out there and I made them removed. They had some, like you say, Commissioner, they had two extra RVs there, and I made them removed. So, I have been on top of that in some of.
So, there's one temporary pole per?
Per lot.
Per lot.
Per lot, yeah.
What size of the lot for a little trailer to install RVs, or mobile?
Usually like in Mission Texas, something about 30 feet wide.
30 feet wide? 30 feet by five?
About 40, 50, 60, I mean, depends on the layout of the.
What is the requirement?
It depends on the.
Does every car have to be 30 by 40, 30 by 50, or 30 by 60? What is that?
27 by 60.
Yeah, on a trailer park, Commissioner, it depends what kind of trailer she gonna have.
Oh, for RVs?
Yeah.
It's gonna be an RV, it's a smaller.
If it's a RV, or if it's a mobile home, that's a difference.
Right, that's a different story.
But there's guidelines for that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, but if they do pop up, or if you see that people are selling lots without a permit, let us know, you know, we'll check it out.
Sell the lots. They can sell the lots.
No, no, they're renting, they're only renting for RVs.
Okay.
I recommend.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 11 is an action item, and this is to approve a refund for account 95147 due to an abatement in the amount of $16,682.64. Ms. Salinas, or Rose, I don't know who's gonna present. Okay, she's back there. But go ahead, go ahead.
This is the account that we discussed back in executive session. And we had a, we had a meeting at the Appraisal District, myself, Rose Benavides, and Ms. Guerra. And to the, they have all the information gathered, and based on the information, and they made, they made an adjustment, and it was, and the last one was for $17,000, and this one is for $16,000. So, it didn't change much. But we revise it, and everything is clear.
Rose here, what's that about, Rose?
Good morning, Commissioner. What happened essentially is that back in 2016, I think it's a resolution date, 2015, I'm sorry, the Commissioners' Court entered into an agreement for one of the multifamily housing as part of the community participation to do a match of sorts, but instead of doing an actual financial contribution, we agreed to do a, an abatement for them. And so, when the request was made for an abatement, they were asking for 100% abatement on their improvements in real estate. So, we went back and met last week with the Appraisal District and had them adjust that for this particular one, so that you would continue to collect tax on the real estate, but the reimbursement is based on the abatement to the improvements. So, we spoke to the company representative and let him know that we wanted to have further discussion after this particular item, so that we could adjust the years moving forward. It's a seven-year agreement, this is year one of that agreement, and it cannot exceed $170,000. But based on the value and the payment, the payment that you would essentially abate if you kept the terms as they are now, would be about $119,000, so it's way below the amount that they were actually asking for on that match. Yes, sir.
We discussed this. I don't recall ever having those, that, those housing projects ask for any abatement here in the.
They did, they came to our office once, and then we never saw that gentleman again. We saw this resolution a couple of weeks ago, when it came out. I think they did come before the court. I don't know necessarily that they framed it as an abatement. I think they were asking for a, for a participation into the project, and that was a mechanism that was used, I think, in order to not have to do a cash match.
But they didn't come forward and ask directly to the Commissioners' Court to ask for this abatement, which I think is wrong, that they went through another route to avoid this, paying this tax, and I think, to me, Your Honor.
You was here?
It's the new ones on Charco Blanco and.
Eisenhower?
And Eisenhower, yes.
See, the issue that I have, Commissioner, and I've talked to Rose and Ms. Salinas about it, is that we never really entered into a formal agreement.
Correct.
A letter was, I guess the court approved for me to go and sign a letter saying that we would, we'd be interested in it, but we never entered into a formal agreement where, because most abatements for this type of thing, we give them for, depending on jobs and amount of money that is being invested in the community. The first year, we might be giving them 100%, second year, 75%, third year, 50%, 25%, until they pay the full amount. See, we never agreed on anything like that. The only thing that we agreed to was that it would not exceed $170,000.
Correct.
But there was never a specific number.
And that's what we passed along to the company representative that had been calling, I guess the tax office, had been calling the Appraisal District. And so, when we got wind of it, we made a call to him and told him, look, we don't, we want to visit this, because we have to write some terms down as to how this is gonna happen. I think this one's been pending for some time, and that was the reason why we asked the Appraisal District to, at the very least, adjust the amount.
How long has it been?
The resolution said 2015, 2015. Yeah, so, but this would have been the first year that they were, I guess, taxed on the actual improvements.
And I agree with you, Commissioner, you know, we've been going back and forth for months now, because I really, I'm not so lonely idea. But from 119 to 170, that's quite a bit of savings that you all have been able to negotiate, and I appreciate that. And we don't want work to get out there, that Starr County is not business-friendly. So, even though I have to take it with a grain of salt, I guess it's okay, but we do need to sit down with them and agree on the.
Absolutely, and we advise them, we have to.
Right now, Judge, I'll take the heat, I move that we reject the abatement.
Your Honor, and before we go, and that's why, I'm not saying we don't want to be business-friendly, but they shouldn't come in in that, in that manner to try to hide what they're trying to get, you know? Because I'm pretty sure, and I'm very sure, that this thing was not brought into the Commissioners' Court. They brought it underneath the table.
We were concerned about that as well, and they produced a resolution that had gone through Commissioners' Court, and that was really what led the conversation to try and sit down, at the very least, adjust, moving forward, how this item would happen. And I don't know who he spoke to previously, but our conversation with him a couple of weeks ago was, you know, we'll work on what we can do with this one, but moving forward, there's gonna have to be some work done.
I do have a motion.
You're not being business-friendly, you're taking care of the county.
What was your motion?
I move that we reject the.
That we reject, okay. I have a motion to reject, is there a second to that? Is there a second to that? Is there a second to that? It dies for lack of a second. Okay, we can continue discussion. I don't know if there's any other discussion. Is there a motion to approve?
I mean, I guess it, because the way they're coming in, I mean, you cannot just give out the money, we got a budget to work with, and then we're coming and returning back.
Okay, you have a motion to approve. I have a motion to.
I have a copy here of the resolution, but I have it in the phone.
It's okay. I have a motion to approve, is there a second? Is there a second to approve?
By law, we have to give them the refund.
Based on fund availability.
Commissioners, by law, we have to give them the refund, because.
I second, Your Honor, based on fund availability.
I have a motion, a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in fair, please aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed?
I vote for it.
I vote for it. It passes.
Thank you.
That's three. Yeah, three, four, two, opposed. Okay, item, item 12 is an action item, and this is to approve refund. For various compressors. Let me tell you what this is, and this, maybe Victor or someone could add more light to it. Some years ago, or a year or two ago, the legislature approved, the oil companies have been, I guess complaining that wherever their compressors are, they're being taxed. So, all the compressors that were in Starr County, we would tax them. Well, the legislature decided to change that, and they said, no, the county, wherever the company is headquartered, that is a county that will tax. And the reason they did that is because this company's lobbied for that, because their headquarters are in counties where their tax rates are a lot less. They're not inside cities, they're not inside hospital districts, they're not inside college districts. So, they save a lot of money by moving back to their headquarters. The legislature approved that, so there's not anything we can do. So, now they're saying, we want the money that we paid, we want it back.
I understand what that, Your Honor, because we had a lawsuit, and it went all the way to the Supreme Court, and we lost, and I'm aware of that, yes. I agree with that, because we lost at the Supreme Court, because there's nothing we can do about it.
That's what, that's what this item is about, that we need to approve.
And the refund starts now, or when the legislature approves?
No, depending on.
As long as we owe, and we didn't pay all of it, it's a small portion, because we stopped getting the tax taxes, so.
Yeah, depending how much they pay. Okay, I have motion and second to approve. Under discussion, Commissioner, it depends how much the company paid, that they paid here and they paid at headquarters, now we need to return it. So, they all vary. I do have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 13 is also an action item, and this is to approve November 5th as the constitutional amendment election.
Good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioners. It was supposed to be for the election workers, it was mentioned in the agenda.
I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
It was supposed to say, discuss to take action approval for the November 2019 election workers.
The line item is wrong, Your Honor.
It was mentioned in the agenda.
If it encompasses, the way it's written, it would encompass, it's talking about the election in general.
Okay, so we can.
Not specifically any specific item, it would encompass.
Okay. Okay, do we have a list of the?
Yeah, it's for the election day, early voting, and runners.
Okay, I do have a motion, a second, under discussion. Alexi, you know, I guess we need to get together with Mr. Pettis, because we had an issue with that when we were working on the budget, that we need to know, a lot of these people get paid from grants, but every year, we end up in the red, so we need to make sure that these people, or that the money gets replaced back into the same line item. But I guess we can get together sometime this.
Yeah, the grant goes into temporary workers within the office, not election.
Okay, yeah, but that's what this is, right? The temporary workers?
That's for the, like, early voting sites and election day, not for people that are going to be working there in the office.
Okay, we don't get reimbursed.
We don't get reimbursed for that.
Okay, that's what's in the budget.
Yeah, that's within the budget of elections.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 14 through 37 are budget amendments, Mr. Pettis?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second motion.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 38 is a tax abatement agreement with Las Lomas Wind Project, Ms. Benavides, Rose? Did Rose leave?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
And if we have that item in executive session.
Oh, okay, until we come back. Okay, so it is, anyone else that needs to address the court? Okay, okay, come on, come on. Item, it is now 10:30 pursuant to section 551.074 and 551.0787. Is there another one? We will now go into executive session to discuss order of salaries and deliberate regarding economic development negotiations. It's 11:15, and we're back in open session under order of salaries. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Your Honor, except on what we discussed inside executive session.
Second motion.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
And let me go back to item 38, this is a possible action on tax abatement agreement with Las Lomas Wind Project. Is there a motion to approve as discussed in the executive session?
Motion to approve, had discussed in the executive session.
Second.
Moved in second, any further discussion? All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 40 was information only. It is 11:17, and we're, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second motion.
Moved in second, all in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, thank you, Judge.